Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. We have some special guests with us this evening. If we could get the young man from PAC 419 to come up front, right out front here, guys, and you can lead the pledge. Everybody please rise. Legs over here.
With diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, see you right there, guys. All right, well, thanks for leading our pledge this evening. Who is with us tonight?
Isaac Onak.
I guess.
Vincent Grammer.
All right, and does anybody want to take on why you're here tonight?
Pat.
Should we get your, should we get your, your cub master up here?
No, not our den leader.
Oh, should we get your den leader up here? All right, come on, come on. There you go. Introduce yourself and then tell us why you're here.
Thank you. I'm Morgan Onak, and I'm here to help our scouts earn their Building a Better World achievement.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
And to that end, we had a little opportunity to meet with the scouts at 6:00 tonight, so it was, uh, it was nice. Lots of questions, so, thanks for coming out, guys. Thanks for starting us out. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with one minor modification. We will move item number six from our consent agenda to the public here, or to the new business, which would be like, right, number nine.
Okay. Dies without a second, so do we go home?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer, to adopt this evening's agenda with the one change moving item six down under new business. To make it, let's just make it nine B or something, or, all right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. We don't have any proclamations or presentations, and we are up to the approval of the minutes from the November 19th, 2019 meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November 19th, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Um, we are on to our consented, consent agenda. Looks like you're taking minutes over there, typing. First item on our consent agenda is actually item two on this evening's agenda, and that's to approve a master contracting agreement with Kinghorn Construction. From time to time, the city retains contractors to assist with various citywide projects that cannot be provided by city forces, and the master contracting agreement outlines a process that will be undertaken for such work and provides annual pricing rates from trusted firms. The city council approved the use of and boilerplate for the agreement on April 7th, 2015 city council meeting. So we're looking to approve a master contracting agreement with Kinghorn Construction and authorize city officials to execute the attached agreement for professional contracting services. Item three this evening on our agenda is to approve the memorandum of understanding with Anoka Hanipin District 11 for the school resource officer. The police department requests approval of a memorandum of understanding with Anoka Hanipin School District 11 for the 2019-2020 school year for school liaison officer and prevention program services. This program, or this agreement, provides funding for assigning police officers as middle school liaison officers at Coon Rapids High School, Coon Rapids Middle School, Northdale Middle School, and River Trail Learning Center, and for officers teaching the Drug Abuse Resistance Education DARE program in the elementary schools. Um, as a little more information, the police department has operated the school liaison program since 1974, and since 1989, the police department has instructed the nationally recognized DARE program in all elementary schools in Coon Rapids. So we're looking to approve the 2019-2020 memorandum of understanding for school liaison and prevention program officer services with Anoka Hanipin School District number 11. Item four on this evening's agenda, which is the third item on our consent agenda, is to, uh, to approve the 2020 business license renewals. All of the license applications are renewals. As indicated, most license renewals are complete, with the exception of a few businesses missing indicated items. Certain licenses, such as tobacco and massage therapists, are approved by staff and are not part of this attachment. The renewals were processed using the 2020 fee schedule. All missing items are expected to be received by Friday, December 13th, 2019. So we're looking to approve the 2020 business license renewals as listed on the attached tabulation, subject to receipt of additional information as noted, and subject to compliance with all city codes. Item five this evening is to adopt Resolution 19-128, establishing polling locations for 2020. An amendment to the election law which took place, or which took effect January 1st, 2018, requires that the city council designate polling places every year by December 31st, even if the polling places have not changed from the year before. As a result, the polling places designated by year-end will be effective for the following candle, calendar year elections. In the event of an emergency, or in the event that a polling place becomes unavailable, there are provisions within the law to allow the city council to designate an alternative polling location, and so we're looking to adopt Resolution 19-128, a resolution establishing polling locations for 2020. And...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Geisler?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Demmer first?
Uh, on the precinct map, I just wanted to make sure we talked about any of them that moved. So for example, I saw that for 3-4, it's back at Spirit of Grace after a time at VFW while it was, while Spirit of Grace was under construction, so thanks to Spirit of Grace for taking that one back, but I didn't know if any other ones had moved that we wanted to highlight.
Mayor? Councilmember Demmer, yes. We moved out of Sand Creek Elementary and moved to Presbyterian Church of the Master, which is on Northdale.
And that's for 2-3?
Correct.
So 2-3 goes over to Presbyterian now.
And there was one...
Morris By.
Morris By. We moved out of Morris By, 1-3, and moved into our building, Riverwind, now that it's nicely remodeled.
All right, so if your voting place moves...
They will also get a card in the mail as we get closer from the county informing them of the location change.
Thank you.
And it'll be in the newsletter, so we will market that so everybody knows.
So that's really the significant thing, is to pay attention.
Yes, please.
Yeah, read the card, don't just assume where you're going to be voting. Let's even, when we haven't moved locations, if it's a year with, where we expect fewer voters, don't we contract some polling places?
That's correct, so you always need to pay attention every year.
So I thought. Councilmember Griscoviac, did you still have something?
Really answered my question. That's the biggest question that I get from constituents, is has my polling place moved and where is it? So I wanted to know which ones moved. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on this? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item seven, to hold a truth and taxation public hearing and consider resolutions 19-129 and 19-130, adopting the 2020 budget and tax levy. So Mr. Stemwell, I believe, is going to give the truth and taxation, the budget presentation, and then, if there's any questions from council, and then we'll open up the public hearing.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's my pleasure to present to you the 2020 proposed budget. I'll be doing that in tandem with our finance director, Fran Hansen, kind of splitting duties this year. Our budget process really begins for staff all the way back in April and May, but the first really public look at the budget comes in August, and that's when staff presents a draft budget for the city council at a work session. This year, that happened on August 13th. The purpose of that timing is that in September, we have to set a preliminary levy for the purpose of certifying preliminary levies to the county. And this year, we certified a levy on September 3rd, and what that does is set the ceiling for the city's tax levy and rate, whereby the city council can decrease it at that point, but can no longer increase it, because that information's used in the truth and taxation notices that are sent out to residents. You should have received yours if you're a property owner in town. About a week and a half ago, the county sent those out. So in November, those parcel-specific notices get mailed out, so that folks are aware of truth and taxation hearings at the various municipal, county, and other jurisdiction levels, such that if property owners are interested, residents are interested in providing commentary on the budget in their proposed taxes, they may have an opportunity to do that before the budget's actually adopted. So after our presentation tonight, as the mayor mentioned, we will certainly have time for questions, but also open up the public hearing at that time. And then by the end of the month, we must certify our final tax levy to the county and the state. There are a number of core principles that the city looks at as we are considering our budget each year. Of course, one of the main things is addressing core responsibilities. We take a look at workloads across various departments, needs in the community, and try to address those as we are able during that budget process. Certainly, we want to recognize the economic conditions of our community, but also in the larger area. If there's a trend in one particular area, of course, we'd be foolish enough to recognize that as we look forward into that next year. Probably one of the biggest things we talk about as staff level, and certainly with the city council, is maintaining a 45% general fund reserve. This is not only important for us to have enough cash flow and buffer, if you will, if there was a downturn or things that happen, but also rating agencies look really closely at your cash reserves and your fund balance policy to make sure, you know, you're able to handle debt and make payments and so forth. So maintaining a 45% general fund balance is a really strong number, and we've been able to do that over the years. There are a number of things that are impacting our 2020 budget that I wanted to highlight for both the council and for the community. First, as was just mentioned, there is an election next year. Actually, there are several elections next year, and for us, that becomes a big task every other year and also a major expense. The wrinkle for 2020 is that there's a presidential primary that's replacing the nominating system for presidential nominations, kind of away from the caucus system, to this presidential primary that's being administered by the county and the city. And so we have to pay for that upfront, at least. We are expecting a reimbursement from the state of about $50,000 to offset that next year. So that will help, but it takes about $161,000 for us to fund that. Mostly election judges, some supplies, and so forth. The other area of increase this year would be, you know, police, both in terms of equipment, which isn't unusual, but new this year is staffing. We've had a number of conversations with the city council over these last months as we look forward, not only to the 2020 budget, but to beyond, to start to address some things that we're seeing with work volume increases, calls for service are through the roof, our demographics are changing somewhat, and there are some different strains that's putting on our public safety departments to address those things. And then generally, I would say there has been some growth in the community over the years, and we have an increased staffing in either police or fire in over 10 years, and so it really became time to consider those issues. And for 2020, we are anticipating two new police officers. Similarly, in the fireside, we are looking at one new firefighter position, and we see this as probably a multi-year effort to get some of those staffing numbers to where we think they are. Certainly, each year, we'll take a look at the reality of that as we go through our budget process, but at least for 2020, that is included in the budget. Also replacing fire engine number one, which we do as a part of our capital equipment plan. They're very expensive pieces of equipment. We looked at, at that over a 10-year period to kind of smooth out the bumps along the way that it just happened to be the year, excuse me, to, to pick up fire engine one. From a transportation side, we're looking at about 5.5 miles of street recon next year. Most noticeably, you start to see that impact in our debt service, which we'll discuss a little later. We're going to continue our steel coating overlays of about 30,000 miles. We have a bigger effort of ours this last year or two to do more maintenance of our roads and not just reconstruction, and this realizes that. And then again, some capital costs there with dump trucks. It's amazing what equipment costs, but certainly, when it's time for those pieces of equipment to be put in play, you want them to be functioning, much like this last week when the snowstorms are coming through. Continuing on into park improvement, we're actually wrapping up at least the park side of our park improvement bond referendum that was passed a number of years ago now. Lyons Coon Creek Park is essentially completed at this point. There'll be some things in the spring that need to be restored and grass and so forth. That was really the last park of many, as part of that park bond referendum, so at this point, our focus shifts to trail connections, trail improvements, things of that nature. So we've got $1.6 million or so earmarked for that purpose here in the next year, year and a half. And then some smaller projects that we're anticipating for 2020. Soccer complex was actually a 2019 project that got pushed back, so we anticipate doing an improvement there at the concession and bathrooms at the soccer complex, and in addition to that, some tennis courts and basketball court improvements at Alder and Kennedy Park. I mentioned a little bit about our capital improvement schedule, and so we do look at that from a 10-year window. Just because something is scheduled to come up in a particular year doesn't mean it has to be purchased that year. We have a lot of conversations as we approach the budget about whether or not that particular piece of equipment needs to be replaced. So they're often moved back, sometimes things are moved up if they're in bad shape. This just gives you a little bit of a view of some of the major capital expenses that we have for next year, everything from the fire engine, as I mentioned, to IT equipment, servers, computers, things of that nature, and everything in between. Continuing on from more of the facilities side, about a year and a half ago, we went through a facilities assessment to identify our various needs at a lot of different buildings, and one of the major things that came up was a roof for the civic center, so that's included in the 2020 budget to the tune of about $1 million. It's amazing what things like that cost. And about $200,000 in various deferred maintenance items at other city buildings, and then into some smaller projects, replacing some exhaust systems at fire stations, remodeling here certain areas, including conference room one at City Hall, and then into Civic Center and ICE Center. One thing that the council's aware of, but I'll just make note of here, is we do have some dollars set aside for site improvements at the recycling center. Sort of an evolving project right now. We may or may not be eligible for some state grant dollars, which could increase the size of the project, but from a budget standpoint, we do have $80,000 set aside at this time. We got some great news a couple of weeks ago as we look to refinance our debt at the Coon Rapids ICE Center, and so when we set a preliminary levy in September, we didn't know what that savings would look like, and so we set the levy. And then a couple weeks ago, we found out that we're going to realize some major savings as a part of that, and as you can see, our anticipated debt payment for the ICE Center in 2020 went from $991,000 to $855,000, and we expect that savings to replicate until, for the life of that debt. And so what council directed staff to do at that time was to build in that decrease by decreasing the levy rather than levying that amount for 2020, and so the levy that's proposed to you as part of your agenda packet does reflect the decrease in that. So I had two things on that that I missed. Really, it's the culture, the culture. The current rate of the interest rates is really effective. We're also to take advantage of a different type of debt that realizes some savings there as well. Sorry, I gotta take a drink. As I mentioned, we have an aggressive street reconstruction plan. We're actually starting to dial that back somewhat, but we will have a little bit more of a debt load on street reconstruction next year compared to 2019. It says last year, but it's thinking 2020. And then same for park improvement, we're about $1.4 million for next year compared to $1.2 this year. A few personnel changes, most of which I've already mentioned. We have the police and fire changes that are probably the most central to the budget impact, but we also have one other change at CTN Studios, which doesn't impact the general fund levy, it's an enterprise fund, but it was worth noting that we're gonna, we're finding ways to continue to enhance our ways to communicate with residents, both through television, but also newsletters and so forth. And so this multimedia specialist position is actually funded out of CTN, but will serve a lot of city communication functions as well, and will be, really be a nice addition to that staff. We're able to take advantage of some changes in the finance department through retirement and some other rearrangement, and actually, we'll be reducing some hours in the finance department, realizing some savings there as a part of that reorganization. And when your, your budget is about 78% personnel, anything personnel-related has a major impact. And so one of the big things we have to look at each year is the cost of living increase to city wages. And for 2020, we are locked in with our four union groups to a 3% cost of living increase, and pending approval of this budget, we would bring to council in a couple of weeks the nonrepresented pay plan, which would also reflect a 3% cost of living increase. And we also did, of course, have increases to health insurance and other things of that nature, which has a really big escalating factor when you're talking about personnel. And with that, I'm going to pass the baton to my counterpart here, Fran Hansen.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Again, my name is Fran Hansen, and I'm the almost brand-new finance director for the city of Coon Rapids. So this is the first time I get to present. Let's start with the utility funds. This year, in 2020, we do not project any water rate increases for the water fund. Our capital improvements are projected to be $2.5 million for water, for the water main replacements, $400,000 for well rehab, and $250,000 to start a design phase for a potential new water tower. Our sewer fund is also not anticipating any rate increases for 2020. The MCES rate is $4,41,000, a slight decrease from 2019, mostly because of our decrease in flow. Capital improvements are projected to be $290,000 for sewer line replacements during the street reconstruction project. The storm drain fund is anticipating a slight increase of 10%. This is mainly due to the comprehensive local surface water management plan that we went through in 2019. They indicated that there were several drainage issues that we needed to address. In order to cover these costs, we anticipate this 10% rate increase to keep this fund operating on a positive basis. $421,800 is also projected to replace storm drains during the street reconstruction. This next slide shows our total budgeted revenues. At the bottom, you can see that we project a 5.42% increase in revenues this year, mainly due to our general fund 5.3% increase, and that is because of the levy increase in 2020. The 21.26% increase in the capital project fund is mainly due to Minnesota state aid to help us fund our street reconstruction project from both the 2019 year and the 2020 year. And most of the other revenues are pretty much the same as 2019. Our total budgeted expenditures are only anticipated to increase 0.90%. Again, the general fund expenditures will increase 5% to cover the expenditure increases that the projected levy will cover. The special revenue fund had a 19.54% increase, and that's mainly due to our public communications fund need for some capital improvements. They're getting a new small truck and also some updated high-efficiency cameras for their pro truck. We did see an 11.61% decrease in our capital projects, and that's mainly due to the fact that we are going to not be as aggressive in our street reconstruction in 2020 as we have been in both 2018 and 19. And the other expenditures here are pretty much equal. This screen shows our property tax levy. As you can see, our general fund property tax levy is $22,300, which is an increase of about 5% from 2019. Our debt service fund is about $4.2 million, which is a decrease of approximately 0.1% from 2019. Our capital project fund of $2.8 million is an approximate 1% increase from 2019, and our total levy of $29,400 is an overall 4% increase over 2019. The $725,000 levy in the HRA remains the same as 2019, and our preliminary tax rate is 40.035, which is actually a decrease from 41.231 in 2019. The tax rate, even though the levy increase went down due to an increase in our city's property tax values. I, I hope everybody's interested in this sign, because it kind of breaks down a little bit of how your tax dollars are spent. Basically, the three major portions, if you have a home valued at $200,000 in the city of Coon Rapids, 35% of your taxes go to the school district, 32% will go to the city, 28% goes to the county, and 5% goes to miscellaneous jurisdictions. Here's the historic tax levy for the city. The, the left-hand side shows the levy for just the general fund, and the right-hand side shows the levy for the entire city. Your taxes are based on the total levy, but we like to break out the general fund because it is our major operations. This year, we project a 5.42% increase in the general fund, but only a 4.05% increase overall in our tax levy. This slide represents the medium single-family home assessed value this year that people will see on the tax forms that went out last weekend from the county. You can see that in 2019, the median family home assessed value was $211,800, and the city tax was $798. In our preliminary budget, the medium single-family home was $230,800, which the value did go up from the prior year, and their gross city tax would have been $863. However, due to the bond refinancing that our city manager discussed, we actually decreased that. The value stayed the same of that home, but because the city tax levy went down, that is now, that gross city tax is now projected to be $858,000, which is a $60 increase over 2019, approximately 7.52%. And that increase is, that we're showing of 7.52% only reflects the city levy and the increase in the homeowner's property value. This shows you a document that's available on our website. It's called our Budget and Brief. It's, it was new last year, and we really thought it added a lot of value to the citizens. You can go to our website at www.coonrapidsmn.gov/citybudget, and you'll see the link to the Budget and Brief. It's a four-page document that just pretty much highlights all of the factors that are in this extensive 300-page budget. It kind of gives a little review of all the high points, and I think everybody would enjoy going in and reading it. And also, our entire budget is out there available for you to read.
All 318 pages.
That's correct. So the Budget and Brief pretty much, you know, brings home all the major aspects of the increases and/or decreases in our current year budget. And so in that, I guess that ends our presentation.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for either our finance director or our city manager? All right. If there's nothing else, then we're going to open the public hearing. All right, so this is our annual truth and taxation public hearing, and I will now open the public hearing. If anybody is here to address council on the truth and taxation budget, truth and taxation?
Does it make sense that our concerns are about the budget?
Um, sure, sure. If you have any, if you have concerns about the budget, or, yeah, that's...
Yeah, so...
Yeah, up to the mic, please?
Can I not?
No. No? No, if you could just step up and give us your name and address, and then share your concerns, please?
Is this public information?
Yes.
Yes.
Like, am I going on TV?
Yeah.
So my address is gonna be on TV?
Um...
Well, that's not good. Stephanie Abrowski, 9919 Lynette Street Northwest, Coon Rapids, N O seven five five four three three. I've lived here on and off my entire life.
Okay.
No joke, like, Coon Rapids Boulevard, my entire life.
Welcome. I, I used to live in that neighborhood.
Yeah. Well, I've been here my whole entire life. I'm a property owner for the past five years. My concern is my property value continues to go up more than I would agree is acceptable. It seems like you guys have this checkbook, and you just keep buying vehicles and things I don't really understand. I went to the police station with my son, who's a Cub Scout. I seen the police officer's garage. They have, like, over 50 vehicles. So I'm reading your budget, and I'm trying to understand where they spend all this money, you know, and I see in the budget, they want five more vehicles, one miscellaneous, one four new cruisers, or whatever. Why? I have a car that's been in three car accidents, and I'm still driving it down the road. I'm not replacing it, it doesn't make financial sense for me. So why are they buying all these vehicles? Like, I, I drive my vehicles until I can't drive them anymore, you know, it makes financial sense. It just feels like they spend way too much money on things that might not be practical or for taxpayers, reasonable, and I think we should have a voice. I brought the property tax guy, I said, "Why are my taxes going up so much? Please explain to me." Yes, I have siding. I had to get new siding because my siding was damaged. I needed to repair it, and now you're gonna jack up my taxes, this amount of money? This is ridiculous. I had to have siding. What's the big deal? Why is this such a big expense? He's like, "That's not it, the property taxes, this, that, and the other, you need to go to the council meetings." So here I am. He's like, "It's gonna make a difference." And I'm like, "All right, I'll be there. I really don't have time. I have this little guy that keeps me busy, and I don't really wanna go to stand in front of a bunch of people I don't know, and it's not my forte to public speak." But I feel like we're, what, a median income city, and it's like, they just spend, like, we're, we're filthy rich. And then I was reading, it goes on, onto the, the homeowners, like, when I bought my house, I wasn't paying this much in taxes. I didn't get that much, you know, in wage increases. Like, it's like, you guys have this crazy budget, and it's like, can I keep up? Or, or what's going on? A lot of us, I know, that aren't here, we're like, "Oh, another increase." Like, really? What changed?
So, so Stephanie, one, one of the things is, you're, you're challenged by your home value there because your home value has gone up different than the rest of the city, and that's how the formula works out. So some people are disproportionately impacted.
But then, that's economics. I've gone to college, understand houses go up in value, recessions happen, we're due for a recession anytime now, that's why you have your fancy budget reserve. I get the financial behind it, but the fact that you guys charge so much for property taxes just based on what you think my house can sell because there's a limited amount of houses people can buy, that's not how people mortgages finance your house. They don't say, "Well, this amount," you know, we can't budget for something that we don't... Five police vehicles, for what? You have 50 in your garage. I can understand working wages, I'm all for paying people for doing a good job, for healthcare, for increases to the cost of living, for things like property tax increases, but I feel like it's, it needs to be more justified, and I feel, like, maybe they should have, like, a vote for, should we put a, a walkway above Coon Rapids Boulevard so people can walk across? Four months out of the year, you'll use it, and how many people are actually gonna use it? That was in some budget I read. I'm like, "Why would you do that?" I get the bridge, you know, I'm all for the bridge over the Coon Rapids, or over Hanson Boulevard so that the police can get over. But there's certain things, it just doesn't make sense, and I feel like they need to look more closely at it so we're not just raising budgets for people in this area, this middle-class area. Like, it's like, you guys might, I feel like, if people don't speak up, there's like an open checkbook, and you guys are just, "Let's buy a new police cruiser here, fire truck here, and install cable truck there." I don't have fancy cable, I don't need that. I don't, you know, it just doesn't seem financially responsible for everyone.
Okay.
So, that's why I'm here, just to voice my opinion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This is the perfect time for that.
I'm fancy, you know.
Is anybody else here to address council during the public hearing? Please come up to the mic, sir.
My name's Jerry. I live that way, over by Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Can we get your name and address, sir?
I'm one of those people that was disproportionately affected.
Can we get your name and address, though, to start out, sir?
To use your words. And I just want some points of clarification for my own...
Can we get your name and address, though, to start the public hearing, please?
My, my estimated market value went up about 16%.
Okay.
He needs your name and address.
Oh, name, address, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
I have new hearing aids.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you were just tactfully ignoring me, or...
No.
Okay.
They don't, they don't work great, or, or, I shouldn't say that, don't work well.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Jerry Anderson, 1793 Mississippi Boulevard, okay? That way. The, the, my market, the market value on our house went up about 16%, a little over that, which is fine, expected that. And my city taxes went up over 16% as well. And is that normal? That's, that's normal, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I was acknowledging that I was hearing you, I, it's probably normal. We could look into it to make sure that that was proper.
Okay. And the budget's going up about 5%. Am I disproportionately paying for more of the budget than other people?
Well, no, go ahead, Wade, this is...
So, this is, this is where it gets tough. The way that the budget is determined is, is a, or the way that the levy is determined is kind of a complicated thing, but it's standard across every city in the state of Minnesota. And I promise you, before I got on the council, I didn't know any of this, and, and it's, it's been kind of an interesting thing to learn. The best way to think of the levy is if you add up all the property tax value in the entire city of Coon Rapids, so all the houses, all the businesses, all the apartments, you take it all, and then you divide it equally among the levy. So if you have a house that's worth 1% of the value of the whole city of Coon Rapids, you will pay 1% of the levy. But then in a given year, if all the businesses go up by a little bit, and all the houses' values go up by a lot, then that next year, the house owners will pay more because now, instead of owning 1% of the value of the city, they own 1.5% of the value. And over time, it all evens out, but unfortunately, you don't really get the benefit always of over time. So for the past, like, I don't know, five consecutive years, people in my neighborhood, which was the lowest-value houses, have seen the biggest percentage increase because there's so much of a market for starter homes. And so the starter homes went way up in value, which meant their annual taxes went up more, but the total amount they're paying is still less than others. And so the, the disproportionate impact is if the value of your house goes up by more than the average house's value, you now own a little more value of the city than you did. It, it's, it's really an annoying thing if it's during the five-year period when your type of house is the one that's the most increase in value. Some years, it's the businesses that go up the most, and then the businesses end up paying higher. Other years, and, and the first year I came here, and I saw the highest-value houses in Coon Rapids ended up with a lower percentage, and the lowest value had this huge percent, I was like, "What's going on?" But it was just that people weren't buying the big expensive houses that year, but people were buying a lot of starter homes that year. And so it, it does ebb and flow with the market, but in the end, everyone pays a share of the total value of the city, but it's just based on the total value of the city compared to the total value of your lot. And if, if your house went up a lot this year, we, we didn't make up that formula. That, that's the same in every city in the state.
Okay.
And it's not a disproportionate amount, it's a disproportionate increase.
Gain, yeah.
Mr. Anderson, I think Mr. Mr. Stemwell would like to add a little clarification, just, maybe just...
If I may, Mayor and Council, and to dovetail off of, off of Councilmember Demmer's comments, I'll get into the camera shot there. Two things actually happen when your values increase if you're below sort of the market value homestead exclusion threshold. So not only does your value incre- increase, in a lot of cases, it's been increasing higher than the median increase across the city, which means you are paying more of the share, as Councilmember Demmer said. The double whammy is you have less of an exclusion, so there's a state property tax relief program called Homestead Exclusion. And as your value increases, you get a smaller exclusion off of that. And so in the case we use, I wonder if it's still up on the monitor here? Looks like we're, there we go. You can see in this example where the actual exclusion decreases relative to the prior year because the value has increased, and so you get a smaller and smaller portion as your home value reaches that sort of magical threshold. And so you get the larger portion increase, you also get a smaller exclusion on the property taxes, and that's probably why you're seeing a bigger increase than maybe you were expecting.
Hey, not that I was expecting one way or the other. One, another question I have in regards to that is, you know, my property, or my taxes, my neighbor, I looked at his as well. My increase was twice his, you know, the, the amount of increase in my value of my property, okay? But my taxes went up four times more than his. I guess I'm not understanding that proportion.
Okay. I don't know if we'll have an answer for that.
Yeah.
Without having both of them in front of you.
Yeah.
Mr. Stemwell, could you also maybe just briefly address the tax appeal process for people who feel like they're disproportionately impacted?
Right. And so there is some confusion because this time of year, you do get your Truth and Taxation hearing notice, which shows your value, but in the spring, you get your estimated market value and taxable market value information from the county. And so I think it's in March of each year, you get a similar-looking letter, so I won't use that one, there's probably private information on it. But a similar-looking letter to your Truth and Taxation that shows your taxes payable estimates in, or your value estimates, I should say. Then there's a local Board of Appeal and Equalization process and a tax court process that, if you feel like your value is incorrect, we happen to have internal city assessors where you can call our city assessor's office to look at your example, if you have other things you want to talk about relative to your neighbors, certainly they could walk you through those things. But you actually have an appeal process to, to make a case as to why your value is higher than it should be. Maybe they're making assumptions, especially if they haven't been into your home for a while, they might be making assumptions about the level of finish or things like that, that if you let them come in and visit, they might go, "Okay, you're right, we've, we've overestimated." It doesn't happen all the time, but certainly we have a handful of situations each year where the council, the local Board of Appeal and Equalization, will reduce the taxable market value, or make the recommendation to the county, who's the authority in that case. So that's sort of one stream. The other stream is there's a tax court process, which is a more formalized version of that where you'd actually make your case to the court system if there were some compelling reasons you felt like your value was too high. But then those values, once they're set at that time, are what get used to determine your taxes for future payable years. And so really, the time if you have value questions, to ask the questions and make those arguments is in the spring. What we're doing here tonight is setting the city budget, which is using, you know, using the levy that's based on the values that were set, but if you have a question about value, tonight, you know, the council wouldn't have any authority to change your value.
Right, right. And the value is not, not my question, is that, the question is, why did mine go up four times more than his when, when the values only went up twice as much as his? I, I, I don't understand that.
I'll, I'll bet if you were to bring your information to our finance department tomorrow, they would be happy to look at that and work out an explanation for you.
Okay.
And I do have a card for you for our city assessor, so you can call him. He'll be anticipating phone calls tomorrow from the hearing, and then he can go over that, and we can set up an appointment for you to go to your house with an appraiser, and he can go over the value details that were submitted on your home. So I'll make sure, I'll give you the card before you leave tonight, okay?
Okay.
So, since that didn't get said at the AMBO...
All right, thank you.
The, the point is, if, if anybody has questions about their home value, make sure you check with the assessor, he is expecting calls tomorrow, or in the future, and he will be happy to make sure that your value is correct. Okay. Anybody else here to address council on the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing? Anybody else here for the public hearing on the Truth and Taxation? We're gonna close the public hearing if there's nobody else here. All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and we're looking at adopting the 2020 budget and tax levy.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that we approve the Resolution 19-129, adopting the 2020 budget, and approval of Resolution 19-130, adopting the 2020 tax levy.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, so this is probably heading over to the city manager or, or finance department, but probably the city manager. One thing that was brought up was vehicle purchase, and I thought it might be good just to explain that we're not always adding more vehicles so much as we have a depreciation schedule, and just sort of how we decide how many to buy each year, because it probably would be good to get that out.
So we do have, as I mentioned, there's a 10-year capital replacement where we've got vehicles, large rolling stock, kind of listed out over that 10-year period. And for things like, I know, police vehicles were specifically mentioned. We have a replacement schedule. We don't necessarily add new vehicles to the, the base number. Usually, we're just replacing vehicles within that base number. And typically, it's on about a four-year replacement cycle for a vehicle like that, given the type of use they have and the amount of maintenance it takes once you start to reach that four and over, four or five-year mark. There's, over time, what you sort of realize is, it makes, starts to make more, more sense to replace them on a fairly rigid schedule rather than deal with maintenance and breakdown issues as you reach those higher number of years. You also get a better, you know, purchase price on the old vehicle if you sell it, you know, closer to that four-year mark than if you extend them into that five or six-year mark. But really, it has to do with a lot of reliability issues, maintenance issues, downtime, and just the useful life of the vehicle as a police cruiser, which is different than, you know, I might drive my truck, or you might drive your car.
And then the other one I, I just wanted to bring up, too, is one of the, one of the most difficult conversations that we have around the budget is, we know that you, it's very hard to keep the budget at a fixed number when most of the money in the budget is spent on personnel. It's a very large percentage on personnel. And so even just keeping the same exact number of people, they're, they're going to have cost of living increases. This year, we added a few people, which we haven't done in, in a while, specifically police and fire. And the, the way that the budget brief writes it, it says due to increased call volume. So one of the things I just wanted to get out there is, that is not an increase in, in really bad things happening. That is not that the city's falling apart, it's actually the medical calls. And a lot of it has to do with the aging of the city population, that there are just more medical calls, especially the, the fire department talks about the number of falls that they have to come address. And so it's, it's really an, an interesting thing that, again, I would have never expected until I heard it, that the call volume for the fire and police has gone up tremendously primarily just, just due to medical calls, and that they're having trouble servicing the medical calls with the number of police and fire that they have. And so we did a cross-reference to other communities that are similar size and similar demographics, similar age, things like that, before we made the decision to add any staff. And it turned out that our neighboring cities with similar demographics have more police per capita than we did. And so it isn't that we're up above anyone around, we're actually still, even with these ads, below a lot of the communities around for providing a, a similar service. So it, it was not an easy decision, but, you know, the, the flip side to the additional budget is your, your other choice is falling behind in, in level of service, and when it came to medical calls, that was a pretty difficult one not to add. And when it came to medical calls, that was a pretty difficult one not to add, so.
And if I may add to that, Mayor and Council, you're right, Councilmember Demmer. The irony is our crime rates are really a historical low, it's not seen since the 60s yet. Our calls for service are through the roof, and medicals are certainly driving a lot of that. The other piece that's driving a lot of that is just, I think, the population's expectations and how they use 911 as a service. They've been rightfully so, we've been conditioned to call 911, see something, say something, a lot of things. Well, each one of those calls generates a response. And one is, you know, you can't distinguish the importance of one or the other all the time, and so you'll get a police officer who will show up. Certainly cell phones and other things lead to, I think, increased call volume as well. So a lot of it is driven by call volume, and certainly not crime increases. And then I would also mention growth in the city, you know. The last time we added any sort of police or fire staff was over 10 years ago. And we haven't been growing leaps and bounds, but we've added thousands of residents over that period of time, a lot of new businesses and things like that. And so, part of this is catch-up to maybe some growth, the larger part of it is the nature of call volume.
Mr. Stemwell, do we still, if we have a good police cruiser, do we still move it to inspections or anything? Or do we still, we still reuse the ones that we can then?
Repurpose or resell is what we do.
Mayor and Council, yes, we tend to reuse police vehicles. They're usually good for at least a couple of years in inspections and assessments and different areas of the city. And then when they reach their useful life, we sell them. Sometimes there's a more specialized vehicle, or there's just not a need, in which case when, we can sell it off at that time. But generally we try to hang on to things as long as we can, as long as they're useful, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this?
Is the floor open?
Not anymore, sir. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. All right, so now, item eight is to continue the public hearing to vacate the public roadway. So this was the public hearing opened sometime back, but due to Excel Energy's objections to the vacations, we're looking to continue the public hearing until December 17, 2019. And this is on vacating the public roadway utility and sanitary sewer easements down in the Port Riverwalk area. Yes?
That's correct, Mayor and Council. We think we're getting closer to resolution on this. I don't know if Grant wants to say anything in particular about that, but due to the shorter week last week, we just sort of ran out of time with Excel to get it on this agenda. But Grant, if there's anything else?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I did talk to City Attorney Brody this afternoon, and we don't have an update. We understand that there are, we have outside counsel that is assisting the city with the vacation matter and also working with Excel. So we think it's just going to take a little bit more time to try and work out those issues. So that's why we're recommending this evening to just continue the hearing to December 17.
So we need to do a motion and a second on continuing that?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Demmer?
We need to continue the public hearing on the public roadway vacation until the December 17, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries, and that public hearing is extended or continued to December 17. Item nine on this evening's agenda is to consider awarding contracts for city hall door replacements. Mr. Hammer, you want me to read this? You did a nice job laying it out.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, these were some items that were included in the facility construction fund for the year. We'll be replacing all the main vestibule doors, civic center side, police station, and the front entryway. So we'll be working with Kinghorn Construction, project managing. We went out and got multiple quotes, and so we're looking to award the two contracts as they are in front of you tonight. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
That's from Griscovjak.
Does this include work at CTN as well? Or is it just, it's police, it's city hall entrance and civic center, so it's those three?
No, Councilmember Griscovjak, it's all exterior doors. We've evaluated all, so this one right out here outside the council chambers, for example, some in the, and behind the police station. It does not include anything at CTN Studios, it's just city hall.
Okay, there's a lot of doors, you're right. I just, in the 2019 budget, I just saw that there was some budgeted money for these front doors and more for police, but I didn't see anything budgeted for the civic center. Was it in the 2019 budget?
Councilmember Griscovjak, there was a budget carry forward from 2018 that moved forward into 2019 because we were going to mainly focus on the main front entryway and some of the ADA push-button issues we were having. And when we looked at the larger scope, we said, "Why fix one door one year and come back and do the rest?" So we carried that money forward to this year, and we're doing the whole, all the exterior doors.
Okay, that makes sense.
That needed.
Yeah, with that carryover, that makes sense. Otherwise it seemed like we were coming in way over budget, so thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
All right, any other questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 19-27 sub nine, awarding contracts for project 19-27, city hall door replacements, and authorize staff to execute the attached proposals.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. Mr. Hammer, we have, or I'm sorry, Mr. Harlecker, we have moved item six to under new business, and it's our first piece of new business. Do you have a presentation for us on the registered land survey for 11225 Exion Street, JSN Properties?
All right, Mayor and council members, this is a request by JSN Enterprises for a registered land survey. This is the site here, excuse me. It's the old, what's called the Budweiser Building, warehouse building. This is the Holland Trucking across the street. And then there's a second lot that's involved. This is Track D, it's actually used for the right-of-way of Exion Street. So it's this site here plus this lot here. They were both part of a registered land survey that was done quite a few years ago. And this is the existing conditions out there. This is the tract, original tract A. This here is the track D, which is the right-of-way for Exion. And this property here was track C, and this is where that new office warehouse building has gone up. And that's kind of what's triggering the changes to the lot lines in the registered land survey. Part of this project was moving an existing drainage ditch to approximately this location here on the south end of track A. In order to accommodate that, what's being proposed is to split this track A into two parcels. Track C, which will accommodate the relocated drainage ditch, will be deeded to the JSN Properties. Engineering is recommending that the entire track C be located within a drainage and utility easement to accommodate the drainage ditch. Tract A here will remain in city ownership, and it still is encumbered with Exion Street. This area down here on the south, if you go back to this map here, the track went all the way down to the north line of track C. And part of the RLS is, then this parcel right here will be combined with track C and then with JSN. This was done to accommodate a driveway access out to the Exion Street. So track A will remain in the ownership of the city. Track B here will be owned by Steinwall Enterprises. And track C will be combined with a lot to the south and will be owned by JSN Enterprises. Planning Commission looked at this application on the 21st. No one spoke at the public hearing, and the commission recommended approval of the attached resolution approving the proposed registered land survey.
Sounds good. Anybody have any questions with Mr. Harlecker?
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
So, in planning case 19-23, I will, would recommend approval of resolution 19-131, approving the proposed registered land survey with three stated conditions. One, a drainage and utility easement is granted in favor of the city across all proposed tracks C. Track C is deeded to the applicant JSN Properties, and track A will be deeded to the city, and track B will be deeded to Steinwall Properties.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. And that'll get them all squared away up there?
Yep.
All right, excellent. Item 10, to consider resolution number 19-127, establishing bulk water permit fees and charges. As a convenience to contractors on small projects, the city will be offering access to bulk water at the public works facilities filling station. The cost would be $2 per 1,000 gallons, up to a maximum of 10,000 gallons, the same amount charged for tier-one residential use, less than 20,000 gallons per month. This convenience allows small contractors access to water without the cost of renting and placing a damage deposit on a hydrant meter. This process requires them to return to city hall at a later date to turn in the meter, pay for a water used, and await a refund for their deposit upon testing the meter. While convenient for the contractor, it does require some staff time to process the permit and be present to allow access and monitor water consumption. As such, we're looking at implementing a $35 administrative fee payable each time a permit is requested. This permit and associated fee would not replace the higher-volume bulk water users on large infrastructure improvement projects. Did you get it all in there, Mr. Hammer, or was there anything else you want to cover?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Hammer on this?
Mayor, I do have a question.
Councilmember Griscovjak?
How does a small contractor utilize this meter? That they come and get a meter, they dispense their own water, they return the meter? Is that how that works?
Councilmember Griscovjak, the way it's set up currently is they come and they would put down a damage deposit, $1,200, for a hydrant meter, they take that with them. So if it's a reconstruction project, for example, or a larger landscaping-type project, they would then go to a hydrant in the immediate vicinity of where they're working, and then there's a meter on that. So they would just fill up their tanks as frequently as they'd want. When they're completed, then they'd come back here to city hall. We would test the meter, make sure it works before we issue their deposit, and then they pay 100% of the cost that they use. So what we're saying now is they just get a little, it's almost like a little punch card that allows them, you know, if it's 50-gallon tank, whatever they have, then they come over, we allow them access during our regular business hours. So it's only used by, you know, somebody that's just coming to get a load or they're going to do one hydro mulch or something like that. It's very rarely used, but what we found is trying to get people in and out of here and the arguments you have, and, you know, "I want to buy $2 worth of water, and I got to give you $1,500 to do that." It gets to be a little problematic for the people at the desk as well as trying to justify that. So we tried to find a little easier way to make that happen.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hammer? Do you want to make a motion?
Uh, Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Move adoption of resolution 19-127, establishing bulk water permit fees and charges effective January 1, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Discussion? Was it Griscovjak?
It was a tight race.
It was a tight race, all right, we'll give it Kicker then.
I do love that we've solved the problem by making it $37 to get $2 worth of water.
All right, hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11 on this evening's agenda is to consider planning case 19-22, consider a preliminary plat 8840 and 8880 Evergreen Boulevard SCF Coon Rapids. Mr. Harlecker?
Yes, Mayor and Council, what's being proposed here is to take this, again, the old Honeywell site, I believe it's Alina, it has their call center in this building now, and they're taking this larger parcel and splitting it into two lots, one for a development parcel over here. The remainder will include the bulk of the parking and the existing building. Here's what the plat, preliminary plat looks like. The smaller Lot 2 will be about 3.25 acres. And Lot 1, which is the larger parcel, is 19.67 acres. You see there's frontage on Evergreen Boulevard, a small piece on 90th Avenue, and I believe this is 80, 89th maybe, down here. This is a concept plan of how this smaller lot might be developed. There is a small wetland along this area here. At the council meeting, at the commission meeting held on the 21st, no one spoke at the public hearing. But the commission did ask about stormwater management on the site and how that will work. Nothing is being proposed to change at this time. Currently, the bulk of the stormwater management flows to the east and then into the city system and out through the retention ponds, and I believe it's Pleasure Creek out that way. When this site here is developed, stormwater management, as well as wetland impacts, will be addressed at that time. They will be required to meet current stormwater management policies and practices as well as any updated wetland management issues. Because of the size of Lot 2, development of that parcel will also require Coon Creek watershed permit. There is sufficient parking on site to accommodate the existing structure as well as likely development on this site here. There are 1,022 parking spaces on site, and the existing building requires 600 and 37 spaces. There's quite an excess of parking available. The commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the proposed preliminary plat with conditions, one, all engineering comments be addressed, and two, cross-access and parking agreement be provided prior to construction on Lot 2. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Harlecker, on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Johnson?
In the entire area, the larger kind of Port Evergreen area, are there any lots that are as small as three acres? Or this one's even being proposed to be subdivided into three smaller lots, maybe about an acre apiece?
Well, if you look at, Councilmember Johnson, if you look at, you know, it would be comparable in size to these two lots here, I suppose. There are smaller lots up and down Evergreen Boulevard. Not all sites are as large and compact as this would have. Certainly, many of them are, but there are smaller lots also in this industrial park.
And is it bounded on that, I don't know if it's south, but lower portion of the map by an actual city street? Or is that a driveway easement or cart path?
This here is actually a city street. I believe it terminates in a cul-de-sac at this point here. And then from therein, it's a private access to the property along the railroad tracks.
And is that private? And is that private access proposed to be continued to this property?
No, at this point, the access into the site is, there's one here, I believe there's one off here, and then there's another one off in 90th. Those will remain in place. I don't think...
Thought in there.
On here, it looks like they're using, this is just a concept plan.
Okay.
And it looks like they're utilizing the existing driveway off of 87th to access the site and then this parcel also.
So that's contemplated in this development agreement, is that access? So we're not landlocking them in here somehow?
Yeah, that's one of my concerns.
Yeah, correct. They will have also have, because it comes off the street here, so they will have, that's addressed in the cross-access and parking agreement that will be required prior to the development of that Lot 2.
Okay. Any other questions?
I guess my question is, is it an agreement or is it an easement such that it's going to run with this land and this property? Because agreements can be terminated, easements run with the land. And so that's a question that I don't know the answer to.
Mr. Harlecker?
I think it should be changed, given the discussion tonight, to cross-access and parking easement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does that make everybody happy? A beer? A beer?
Mayor, can I just get a clarification from Mr. Harlecker?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Is Lot 2 just the wooded area or does it encompass some of that parking space?
It really is just the wooded area.
Okay, and that goes to the access.
It might, you know, like a rule of parking here. But it's primarily that wooded lot. And the two lots will share that field of parking between them and extending out to the north.
Okay, and that was kind of my question going along with Mr. Johnson's question too, the access to it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion in Planning Case 19-22, the commission recommend that the council approve the preliminary plat with the following conditions. One, all engineering comments be addressed, and two, a cross-access parking easement be provided prior to construction on Lot 2.
I'll second it with that amendment.
Motion by Kicker, second by Johnson. And you got the nuance there, Ms. Lenzmeyer? All right. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. Item 12 on this evening's agenda is an introduction only. In Planning Case 19-24, consider introduction of an ordinance amending sections 11-701, 11-801, and 11-903. Mr. Harlecker, it's all about that daycare, isn't it?
It is. It's, there's, we're trying to, it's essentially a housekeeping ordinance, it's trying to get terminology consistent throughout the code. And in the couple of cases in the commercial districts as well as the industrial district, term is currently child daycare center state license. That's not defined in code. What is defined is daycare facility. So we're trying to be consistent and use that terminology where applicable within the city code. And then with the port wellness, there is a, on the land use table within that section, there's a couple boxes that are blank. One, both are in port wellness, one is for studios of artists and craftspeople, that's listed as a permitted use in all other, the three other port districts. So staff is proposing to list that as a permitted use in port wellness also. Same with limited production and processing, it's listed as a conditional use in the other three ports, and staff is proposing that it also be listed as a conditional use in port wellness.
All right. Council, questions, Mr. Harlecker?
Quick question.
Councilmember Demmer?
So it, the question's kind of a question of what you think the original intent was. So daycare facility is much broader than what it sounds like someone's trying to get to with the term childcare center state licensed. Was there an intent at some point to only allow it to be child daycare and was there a reason for that? Or we made a mistake back then and now we're fixing it?
I couldn't find any guidance in doing the research for this. It might have been that back when this was initially proposed, it was child daycare center state license at some point. The definition was changed to make it broader, but they never went back and changed the use tables.
Okay.
That's just...
And so the new intent is to be broader and not limit it to only centers that care for children, and that's, that's what we want going forward for this use?
That's what staff is proposing.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I guess I spoke last.
Councilmember Demmer?
Moved, oh, sorry.
Oh wait, is this just an introduction? Yes.
Agreed that it's introduced.
I started out by that, all right. If there's no other questions from Mr. Harlecker, then we will consider Planning Case 19-24 introduced, which will be amending sections 11-701, 11-801, and 11-903. Thank you for the clarification, Councilmember Geisler. I put it in big, bold letters at the beginning, introduction only.
I missed it before, right?
All right. And that was item 12, and we are on to open-mic public comment. Is anybody here for open-mic this evening? If you are, open-mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes, and if you wish to participate, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. And thank you for your patience.
My name's Kevin Pentola, 11103 Foley. I've lived there for almost 20 years now. The problem I'm running into, I'm now referring it to as the Coon Rapids International Raceway. I'm a former police officer and I warned them when they did it, there was going to be enforcement problems, and they, I don't think they listened because I very rarely see a squad car on it. I've had one car pass me so fast that I couldn't even get a partial read on the license plate. And I thought that was going to be my biggest problem, and it actually turns out to be the city's contractor, Park's construction. I have had nothing but grief with them after hitting a big hole. There was several weeks where there were open, big open holes where they did not maintain them. After talking with the city's insurer, they said because of the contract, that Park was liable for it, and that they understood Park had already contacted me. I says, that's news to me. Park has been very vague, they've been evasive, have not returned my phone calls. If it was not for the city staff and the city insurance company, I wouldn't even have that information. They have since sent me a letter stating that they have no proof of liability and turned it into my own insurance company. Can you imagine if I drove into your parking lot and hit one of your cars and told the police chief, "Too bad, turn it into your insurance company"? I'd get a free ride to the Anoka County Jail. And they have just, like I say, no contact with me. If it wasn't for the city engineer, I wouldn't even know that, but he called them. I asked him if I could get their performance permit revoked. I tried being a nice guy, been polite with them, no more. I do not believe that they should be allowed to bid on city contracts if they're not going to go by the contracts. And I question, since they downsized, whether they have the manpower or experience to work on a project of that scope. Like I say, after seeing weeks of open potholes, cars were routinely driving over the center line into oncoming traffic to avoid them. I did over $800 of damage on my car up near Holly Circle. Immediately after getting my tire changed, I called 911 and I says, "You either get it barricaded or filled because somebody's going to get hurt." I can't believe, I went back to see how bad it was during the daylight, because this was 5:00 in the morning and it was not safe around that curve. Mysteriously, the whole area got blacktopped that day. I don't know if that was convenient or just happened to be that day. But like I said, from what I've seen with their lack of exercising caution, I personally would like to see them prohibited from operating even in the city of Coon Rapids until they can demonstrate they've got adequate safety measures in place for the citizens.
Okay, well, thank you. I think staff is taking copious notes over there and somebody will be in contact with you about that.
And I noticed the city attorney wasn't here. I obviously have limited legal, but my question is, is even though they're legally liable for damages in the city, I'm questioning whether a person injured in that area because of the city's contractor could come back at the city because they got deeper pockets.
Okay. That would be the other question they'll address with you.
Yeah, and I, you know, I should have brought it up sooner with all the issues with the potholes so bad, and I know I'm not the only one. I learned through your insurance carrier, there's at least one other claim against Park. I don't know what's going on. Like I said, I've tried being polite and that's...
Okay.
I'll just mention, if we could get your phone number, I'm guessing maybe engineering staff may have it already, but before you leave, if you could just make sure we've got some contact.
Yes, and I guess for, an aside or whatever, I'd really like to give a hats off to the city staff. I called reception, I got taken care of. I called the city engineer. When he promised to do something, he did it. I got called back, same as Public Works. So I don't know what more I can ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Can I just ask a point of clarification, just for my own benefit? Because that, that is my ward.
Yes.
Up in that area, and I want to make sure I understand it right. You started out by talking about the thing that I hear about the most, which is the speeding traffic unfold. Okay, so I understand that one fully. The potholes you're running into, and you had the specific issue with, remind me again where they are? Or where?
This, the one that I got hit with was up on the intersection south of Holly Circle.
Okay, so it was by...
It's around a curve. Fortunately for me, I had slowed down to 20 miles an hour for that curve because, you know, now if it had been in the construction part of it, I wouldn't have minded. But when it occupies a third to a half of the travel lane the traffic is using, and this was on a Tuesday morning.
Gotcha.
If it had been Monday morning, I could have understood, you know, it getting pounded open over the weekend, they didn't have a chance to work on it. But on a Tuesday morning?
I got you.
And there was a previous history several blocks south of there for the same thing.
Thank you for helping me understand where it was. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else here to address council for open-mic this evening? With that, then we'll close that portion of the meeting. We didn't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are out of other business.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, so today was the truth in taxation, which I know is a lot of work, the budget's a lot of work. So, you know, thanks to everybody who did, I mean, just tremendous amount. There will never be a budget that makes everybody happy, which is the toughest part of all of our jobs, and I will tell you that in numerous public meetings, we've had a lot of discussions and it's hard. There's something about the process that I feel like is very not public friendly, even though we really, everything is an open meeting, it's all an open meeting, but the place where the public hearing gets held is at the very end, after we've kind of punched everything out for months and months and months. And, you know, the whole process more or less starts in the spring when you get your valuation, and if you don't recognize that that's the time to appeal your valuation as soon as you get it in the spring, you know, what, I mean, I'm sure that historically they did that in the spring because that's how long it took to get all the calculations done, and so now we get, could all be done in the same week now on a spreadsheet, but it isn't. So for people at home, you know, if this is a concern, there's multiple steps here and they're handled at totally different times by totally different agencies, and I absolutely understand why that would be frustrating if you were at home, because the, setting the valuation, that's a spring thing. We, it's too late now. You're actually, if you're coming to us now, you're asking about next year. That is taken care of at multiple levels, including county. And so, you know, if you're worried that your valuation is high, it's going to lead to a higher share of the levy and it's going to lead to a tax increase come winter. So, you know, again, I apologize that it's a multi-step process like that, that, you know, has all the multiple agency thing. By the time it comes to us now, we're sort of blind to all that stuff that happened. We set a levy saying what we think the right level of service is for the city and what we think the right things should be, and then it gets spread out based on what people's values were in the spring, and I mean, the two things are really separate. None of that formula is controlled by anybody here. And so it's always hard for us to sit here because we hear people with possibly very legitimate concerns about the part that we can't do anything about. But I will say, on the budget side, you know, we get the first draft of the budget in early It would be great if people, you know, maybe, maybe next year at the time we're doing the valuations, if we just remind everybody that the best time to come talk about the budget, the best time to contact the council people about the budget is early summer when we start having the work sessions in the, in the open meetings there, and that by the time it comes here, it's really hard to make any major adjustments. I mean, the ink is pretty much dry at this meeting, and the public hearing is something we have to have and we definitely want to have, but you can't make a big structural change, and unfortunately, that's just how it, on paper, it says, this is the public meeting for the budget, and we really maybe need to try to figure out a way to get the public in earlier, because I, it would frustrate me if I walked in not knowing that that's the situation.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Johnson?
If I could briefly just dovetail off that, it was mentioned tonight, but I really want to underscore it, and that is, the city council did something that, I got to be honest, I can't remember a city council or a county board doing in a really, really long time. And that was, the city council unanimously voted to not only reduce its budget, but to reduce the levy. And so when, you know, and the city staff knows this, but the public needs to know that the city staff is always charged with responsibility to look at places where the city can save a buck, or two, or in this case, hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not well over a million over time. And we are grateful to the staff that they recognized an opportunity to refinance some of our debt, to obtain a great refinancing. We've talked about that at prior meetings. But what the council made as a policy decision today was to take that proposed budget and reduce it and to give that money back to the taxpayers. And it'll be a small sum per family, but it's a significant amount of money. And I just, I guess I've been exposed to government for so long, not only in the private sector, but also in the public sector. There's this old phrase, "If you don't use it, you lose it" kind of thing. And here, the city council voted unanimously to reduce all of that and return money back to the taxpayers. And candidly, the city council could have found other things of value that would have contributed to the city to spend the money on, and that's a notable thing that I didn't want to go without underscoring tonight. So I'm real proud of the city tonight.
All right. I suspect the folks that were here for the public hearing both live in the same neighborhood, and I'm sure they were both, it's a very popular neighborhood, and those prices are going up, so.
Yep.
You know, and when that card comes in March, you know, it takes a while to realize that first you go, "Hey, the price of our house went up, nice." You know, every time I open that, I go, "Oh, good, it didn't."
Your day will come.
I empathize entirely because, I mean, again, every year I'm like, "Why? Why is it in my neighborhood again?" Right? But, you know.
I mean, we pay a significant amount of taxes, it's just the value isn't going up that much, so. Mr. Stemwettel?
And Mayor Council, on that topic, you know, perhaps one opportunity would be for, through the newsletter, website, whatever it might be, in the spring to sort of link those two processes together, that, you know, and we can show that timeline. You're going to get this, uh, notice of your value, and here's that's, how that's going to reflect in your taxes come November and December for the next year. Because you're right, I think there's a disconnect there. People are, you know, they see that, "Oh, the value," and a lot of times it is, well, there's two things. Either they're excited because it's worth more than maybe they thought it was, or that it went up too much, and what's going on, and, you know, they have some questions about that. But I don't think they're thinking about the levy, and of course, it's even more complicated as councilmember Denver mentioned, because it's not just our levy, school district, county special, special districts, and certainly there have been changes, as, you know, it's related to some of those other entities that impacts your property taxes more.
Yep.
Or equally, or sometimes less than, than us. Uh, but it's a very complicated system statewide. It's a system we have to sort of live, live with, uh, but it, it is hard to understand.
I, I think the hardest part too is, you see your land value, your house value go up by ten percent, and you think, "Oh, man, I gotta, I'm gonna pay ten percent more in taxes." But based on the homeowner exclusion, and based on the fact that your neighborhood might be going at ten while others are going at three, you might end up paying a twenty percent tax increase, and someone else might pay a one percent tax increase.
Correct.
Now, in the end, you all pay a share, but the increase is what always is the, is the shock, and, you know, it's hard, because in the example, the increase was, you know, sixty dollars, um, which is, you know, it's sixty dollars a year, and that's going towards new police and new fire, and, and I, I don't want to minimize the, the sixty dollars, but percentage-wise, it can be a huge increase, and, and, you know, the, the percentage can be a shock.
Yep, as a clarification, that's only the city's share.
Exactly.
The county's share went up as well, so they have the, the same amount, whatever the percentage is there too.
Yep. And in that example of the sixty dollars that we've used, if we would've held our levy to the same as 2019, there still would've been a thirty dollar increase for that home because of the value and the market value exclusion changes. So if we had've been zero, effectively, they've still gotten an increase, and that's the sort of logic that's difficult to understand.
And, and on our side, the challenge is we don't do anything at the house level or even the neighborhood level when it comes to setting that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we, we try to minimize the increase in the budget by, you know, the, the most minimal possible increase while keeping a good level of service, but then as that filters down, somebody might actually pay fewer dollars in taxes while somebody else pays twenty percent more, and that, that, the delta, the amount your specific house pays, that is completely out of our control. And so even if we dropped the levy, you could end up paying more in taxes. Correct. It's, it's just a really disconnected system that is hard to wrap your head around.
Mm-hmm. It's interesting, as you were talking about that, you know, transparency, in our August workshop, is when staff really presents their case, I'm sorry, presents their case for if they need additional staff. I mean, we've been hearing about it through the year, but then that's the night that they really plead their case. And I'm wondering if maybe at that second council meeting in August, when it's televised, I wonder if there's something at that point we should just kind of start, I don't know...
Throw a public hearing in then?
Well, I don't know, but throw a, a public hearing, but it, or a more public statement about what we've got coming up for needs. I, I don't know. Maybe we build some transparency in there somewhere.
I mean, I mean, there is an opportunity for people who are paying attention and really want to get involved in this to, uh, reach out to us at any point in time through the process, but, but even if they want to make a public statement about it before these items make it onto the agenda, that is one of the reasons we have an open mic. And so they can say, "Hey, I've been paying attention to the budget, and I see you're, you've budgeted for these things, and here's how I feel about the priorities of the city." And that's, that's a completely legitimate way to share information with us, among all the many other ways that are available to them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, councilmember Johnson, I think you get it on the nose. I mean, they can call us at any point.
Yep.
You know, I'd, I'd be happy to talk to any resident that has any questions about, you know, the budget. Um, that's, that's something that's always on the table.
But they can speak to all of us together at once if they so want to do that.
That they can.
Yep, right, yep.
And, and like at our summer in the city meetings, you know, we tried to have some budget kinds of things there. One of them were, you know, "How would you apportion the dollars? What are the most important things that we should be financing?" So we were trying to collect a lot of information through dialogue with, with residents in a lot of different fashions, and so, you know, whether it's an individual call, whether it's coming to an open mic, participating at a summer in the city meeting, you know, when, you know, any of those kinds of things, um, let your voice be heard.
Absolutely. All right. Other business? Got a few things coming up. Skate with Santa coming up December fifteenth. That happens just before our next meeting. So even though I put that at the bottom of the pile here, let's see. Enjoy an evening of open skating at the Coon Rapids Ice Center. Concessions, skate rental, and skate sharpening is available for purchase throughout the evening. Five dollars per skater. Children ages five and under are free. Come early for the holiday exped, expedition. Not sure what that is. The ninth annual holiday exhibition, there it is, features beginner to advanced level skaters from the Coon Rapids Learn to Skate program. The program is free to watch and takes place from four-twenty to five-twenty. Everything is on the Coon Rapids City's website, um, under events. And then I would also encourage folks to take place, if they are interested, in the two thousand nineteen holiday lighting contest. I'm looking for the registration deadline is noon Monday, December ninth, and once registrations are received, addresses will be placed on a public map for the community to view. The online map will be posted by the twelfth, and the community is invited to tour the lighting displays. Arts commissioners will visit properties December twelfth to the fourteenth and decide the winners, and the winners will be announced after December eighteenth, and there are four cash prizes in two different categories. So I guess the point there is, check the website. If you want to enter your house, you've got till December ninth, and otherwise, after the twelfth, look for the map and go out and drive by. They're a lot of fun. Um, and then there's some holiday donation opportunities at several of the city's, uh, the city of Coon Rapids buildings, our drop-off locations for various local organizations helping people this holiday season. Coon Rapids City Center, Coon Rapids Ice Center, and Bunker Hills Golf Club. The city center is for Toys for Joy, AC/BC food shelf and Granny's Closet. Ice Center is Toys for Joy, and Bunker Hills is Toys for Joy. So there. Um, Mr. Anderson, how are things going at the golf course? Nice looks, it must look like something out of a Hallmark movie out there.
Yeah, mayor council, uh, the, the weather wasn't great for people traveling out of town, but it was, it was, it was beautiful for people coming to Bunker Hills for a Thanksgiving meal, and we did have a record crowd, and we want to thank all those folks for coming out, uh, late last week for that. It was just a fantastic day. And yeah, the backdrop, uh, the winterscapes were fantastic for that, and they're, and they're, it's just gorgeous out there right now. You know, I prefer it green, of course. But I suppose it's okay for a little while here to have a nice winter backdrop. And, uh, the, the county has groomed the trails for cross-country skiing, so folks interested in that can get ahold of the Parks Department there, um, to gain access to the grounds. Uh, and there were many folks out doing that today. It was just gorgeous day for that, nice and calm. Uh, winter golf is going on in the simulator center at Bunker Hills. We have over fifty new courses folks can play, so they can get ahold of us at the Bunker Hills. Golf shop, seven six three, seven five five, four one four one for that.
Excellent. All right. Good to hear. It looks like, uh, I was out there with the city manager the other day, and we were looking at all that snow, and he figures that's going to make you happy because it's going to keep the grass from that freeze damage like we had last year.
It, it does. Thank you for, yeah, it does, and we want that to stick around. So we love what we've got now. Let's keep that layer good to go until early March. How's that?
All right. Sounds good.
People can ski on it, too.
That's right. All right. Any other business? Mr. Hammer, any road updates? Any new dates on Hanson?
How did I know you'd ask me that, Mr.?
Well, you, you were still here, though. I was surprised, so...
Um, no, we're still planning for a, um, December twenty-first opening, and, um, full opening next year, but certainly getting the bridge open to allow access, uh, through the winter here, uh, right before Christmas.
Well, even December twenty-first, that's the first time I've heard that date. Chief Piper, is that a date you're familiar with? December twenty-first?
Saturday?
Uh, mayor council members, yes, that's the latest date. I think it was the sixteenth, a couple of weeks ago, and it got moved to the twenty-first, and then also just FYI, as a couple of you already know, is that the, due to the weather, uh, the ribbon cutting will be pushed off till the spring, uh, when it's completed, done, done, and all, all lane, their both lanes are open each direction, so just so you're aware of that also.
All right.